To, uh, to an amendment to your bill if ours doesn't pass.
So, so, so that I understand, we've got two things you would like us to consider. One is a substitute to House Bill 1 EX.
Correct.
And is the other an amendment to House Bill 1 EX?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have, and, and the substitute would adopt the House, would effectively, uh, alter House Bill 1 EX so that it would adopt the Democratic plan that was presented to the committee yesterday?
Correct.
All right. And then what, and the amendment would do what exactly?
So, if you guys accept, if the committee accepts the House map, then we won't present an amendment, because if you accept the Democratic map, we don't create the problem with Perry. If you don't accept the Democratic map, if the bill, if the, if the body doesn't accept the Democratic map, then the amendment would then come to amend, uh, the Republican map.
Okay. Do we have, so you presented a map yesterday that would correspond with your proposed substitute, that's correct?
Correct.
Do you have a map that would correspond with the proposed amendment?
It's in the packet.
The map itself is in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we, I don't believe that map is in the packet. The concern we have with this substitute is I think it's got a different plan name. I, I would, I would ask you all to come to some decision so we can get some clarity so that we can move forward, 'cause we got a train to catch. The Rules Chairman's gonna kick me out of this seat pretty soon.
Let me make sure on the amendment.
Okay.
If I could have your attention, everyone, if you take your seat, please. We'll try to get back underway.
Do you have to call for a motion on your underlying part?
I do, because we've got to send it back out. All right, let me, let, let, let me, if everyone will have a seat. And my members will get back up here. All right, let me go ahead and just get us in a posture so I can make some decisions on your proposed motions, Mr. Leader. First of all, the Chair will entertain a motion to recommend due pass to House Bill 1 EX, which was recommitted from the Rules Committee this morning. I hear a motion. Is there a second? I hear a second. Yes, let's read the LC number. It's LC 472575. That's House Bill Number 1 EX. I have a motion, a second, on the floor. Is there any discussion? All right, now, I think it's, it would be the appropriate time to hear a motion as to amendments or substitutes. The concern I have, Mr. Leader, is from the discussion this morning, I'm not really sure what we're being asked to vote on, nor do I have copies of that bill or the maps for the members of the committee. And I, I have, you know, I have the greatest respect for you, and admiration, and personal affection. And so yesterday, I, I asked for a motion on basically what you're trying to do today when we didn't have a written substitute. We have some copies today, we don't have enough for the rest of the committee. But we had some time yesterday. We don't have time today. And I don't believe we've got a map for the proposed amendment that you have. And I don't want to have the committee vote on those things without at least one or the other. So I, it, it pains me greatly, but I, I don't see that I have any other choice but to rule any motions based on those maps or amendments to be out of order.
What you, what you have before you is LC 472578. LC 472578, which is the, which is the map that we presented yesterday. And that LC number is a substitute, the Democratic House substitute, the map that you saw yesterday, for 1 EX. And so, I would ask the committee to favorably consider that motion to substitute LC 472578 for 1 EX. And now, the amendment that you spoke of, which was LC, incidentally, 472587, is where I think the confusion is. That 78 and that 87, I think, created a little bit of a confusion around, right, what you have in front of you. That has a map. But not to, you know, belabor this day. I would like to have a consideration for LC 472578, which you've seen the map yesterday. You have that in front of you now, that the, that the committee would consider that.
And, and, Mr. Leader, we have, I have a copy of that bill, but I don't believe we've got enough copies for the entire members of the committee. We don't have the, I don't see the map here, and we don't have the amendment.
Right, right there. They're right there.
Okay, so what do you have back there?
LC 472587.
And the 78 they have up there.
All right, that's the proposed amendment, but we don't have a map for that.
But you have?
25, the, the substitute, I have a few copies here, but I don't think we've got those for everybody. And I, my understanding is on the amendment, we don't have a map to show everybody, so they know kind of at least what the general boundaries of the districts are that they would be voting on.
So on the amendment, Mr. Chairman, as we sort of deliberate, the amendment, I understand. But on our map, the Georgia House Democratic Caucus map, we've seen that, you have a couple copies. I would still implore you to allow us to have a vote on that particular map.
Well, the Chair did allow that yesterday, and no one made the motion.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, all due respect. I appreciate you allowing that yesterday. I think there was some confusion in the way in which our members heard the question. And not to belabor the point, I think now is the time to write that. We have a minute or two to do it. And I think it would be appropriate at this particular time to allow the committee to vote on the substitute that the Democratic House Caucus have get put before you.
Mr. Leader, in the posture we are today, I do not feel like I can allow that motion and I rule it out of order.
Understood.
That is my decision.
Understood. We'll see you on the House floor.
I'm sorry?
I said, we'll see you on the House floor. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you and the committee's time, and we will continue as we move forward.
I'm sure we'll continue the discussion. I have a, Representative Smith, Chairman Smith?
I guess this is a parliamentary inquiry as to the procedure of the House rules, the House floor rules. Is it not true that each legislator has the right to ask to see the copy of an item before there has to vote on it? That is the House rules.
That's my understanding, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
And it pains me greatly to rule as I am, but I feel in this posture, given the, the court order deadline we are under, which we have known about for a few months now, we cannot take additional time at this point. We've got to, we've got to move on something. We have to take action. And I don't think we've got enough information before the committee to allow it to properly take action. So at this point, I've got a motion and a second on the floor that we approve House Bill 1 EX and recommend it do pass. Is there any discussion on that motion? Let me check with, okay, because I messed this up yesterday. All right, hearing no discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, may we poll the committee, please? All right. Vice Chair Hong.
Yes.
Secretary Reeves.
Yes.
Representative Alexander. Chairman Ballinger.
Yes.
Chairman Deloach.
Yes.
Leader Estration.
Yes.
Representative Fleming.
Yes.
Representative Gilliard.
No.
Representative Jackson.
No.
Pro Tim Jones.
Yes.
Representative Prince.
No.
Representative, I'm sorry, Chief Deputy Whip Scott.
No.
Chairman Smith, Chairman Lynn Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Richard Smith.
Yes.
Chairwoman Taylor.
Yes.
So the vote is 10 in favor, 5 against. Chair finds the motion passes. The bill is referred back to the Rules Committee. That concludes our business today. Thank you, everybody.
Well, we still have a few rules members kind of strangling in. Yeah, I understand. All Rules Committee members, if you're in the, in the back, come up front. Okay, it's time to get started, call this meeting to order. I want to ask Mr. Williamson, if he'll open us with prayer, please.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, thank you once again for the safety and blessings you've bestowed on each one of us. Give us your wisdom as we seek to further do your will through this body today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay. We're in the process of looking at House Bill 1 EX, LC number 472575. LC number 472575. We voted on this earlier this morning, but the spot, well, well, the committee voted on it earlier. And it was voted on yesterday by the Reapportionment Committee and Redistricting, and it was voted out again this morning in the same version. So the, the sponsor of the bill, Chairman Leverett, will be here to give a brief overview of what this bill does and what it is about. And considering the importance of this bill, and also considering the timeframes that we're under, and considering the restrictions and guides that the judge gave us, it's important that we go ahead and take care of this matter, and we will take care of this matter today in a supplemental calendar for today. Supplemental calendar for today, so it will be on the House floor today. Okay. Chairman Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just seems like deja vu all over again. This is House Bill 1 EX. This is the map that we have drafted and drawn and was passed out of committee yesterday, and again this morning, that will comply with Judge Stephen Jones's order that we redraw our maps in order to comply with the Voting Rights Act. Specifically, it creates five new majority black districts throughout the state, and then unfortunately, due to population equality, we had to reconfigure districts to, to deal with the addition of those districts. As you know, we, we cannot have 185 House districts, we have 180. So upon adding those five, we had to reapportion and reconfigure the districts. We believe this order complies with the, or this, this map complies with the order of the Court, and we are under a deadline, which is ever-present on my mind, of December 7 to, or December 8, to make all this available. So one week from today, we still have two more maps we have to, we'll have to address as a General Assembly. So I would ask that the committee approve this and pass it out so that we can take action on it today on the floor.
Okay, does anyone have a, okay, Carolyn, Representative Hughley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Chairman. After witnessing the committee meeting, and in light of the fact that the members did not have copies of any proposed amendments, are we, are you going to suggest that they be given that opportunity when this bill hits the floor? If there, there are members who have a, an amendment that would uncouple them, would they be given the opportunity to offer an amendment at that time?
No ma'am, excuse me, no ma'am, this is, this will hit the floor as a structured bill.
Thank you.
Yes, my answer to that would be, I would not presume to make a decision that the Rules Chairman and this committee is to make.
Okay. Mr. Leader. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Leverett, in light of Representative Hughley's question, to your knowledge, have any, were any amendments to House Bill 1 EX brought to Rules for consideration this morning? The first, first time we met this morning?
When this committee met?
Yes, sir. Any amendments?
I would like to answer that, yes, amendments were given to me as we were walking into the door, and the Rules say that any amendment that is proposed for Rules has to be turned into the Rules Office one hour in advance. Now, since we started at 8:15, in order for that copies to be in, they would have had to been in at 7:15. I was here at 6:30 this morning to be sure that the doors were open, and no, nothing was given to me until we walked into the door at about 8:14, 8:15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask a follow-up. Representative Leverett, yesterday in the redistricting and reapportionment committee meeting, were any written amendments submitted to the bill, House Bill 1 EX, when the question was called for consideration of that bill?
No, sir, they were not.
And did any member of the redistricting and reapportionment committee yesterday, when the bill was called for consideration, make a motion for consideration of either a substitute or an amendment?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Chair Lady Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This map that we're voting on does comply with what the judge ordered to make five minority districts, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. My belief it does. He was very specific about what he wanted, and we're complying with it.
Chair Lady Smith.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. This is for Chairman Leverett, I'm over here on the other wall.
Oh, there you are.
Good morning to you. This goes to the process and the procedure you followed during the redistricting committee meeting this morning. Did you not give the presenter of these various proposals ample time to explain what was going on even this morning? And it was also given to him yesterday? Is that not true, sir?
Yes, ma'am, as I understand the question, that is correct.
Lady Park, I mean Whip Park, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Leverett, I appreciate the effort to comply with the court's order, but is it not true that it is your opinion that the Republican proposal complies with the judge's order, and that there are differing opinions, including that this map is unlawful under existing law within the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals?
That is my understanding, yes, sir. There is, there are, there is a difference of opinion, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Well, unfortunately, everybody has one. Okay, I see no more questions. I guess now's the time to, okay, the question has been asked. Time for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
No.
We'll do a roll, call a vote. I got, I like what the appropriation, or I mean, reapportionment committee did. Our secretary will call the vote and answer yes or no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bruce Williamson.
Yes.
Al Williams. Darlene Taylor.
Yes.
Ron Stevens.
Yes.
Lynn Smith.
Yes.
Alan Powell.
Yes.
Butch Parrish.
Yes.
Sam Park.
No.
Mark Newton.
Yes.
Chuck Martin.
Aye.
Eddie Lumbston.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Jan Jones.
Yes.
Matt Jackson.
No.
Carolyn Hughley.
Yes.
Scott Holcomb.
No.
Bill Hitchens.
Yes.
Lee Hawkins. Matt Hatchett.
Yes.
Stan Gunner.
Yes.
Gerald Green.
Yes.
Chuck Estration.
Yes.
Carla Drenner. Katie Dempsey.
Yes.
Sharon Cooper.
Yes.
John Carson.
Yes.
James Burchette.
Yes.
Shaw Blackman. James Beverly. Rick Jasper's, yes. Mandy Ballinger.
Yes.
Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Majority has it. Do you need the exact number?
Yes, please.
Mr. Beverly just wants in.
Mr. Beverly, on this, are you a yes or a no?
No.
Al Williams just wanted. Mr. Williams, you're vote, yes or no on House Bill 1 EX? About two seconds.
Twenty-three, those 23 to 7.
23 to 7, bill passed. This will be part of the supplemental calendar for today. Ms. Ballinger, you have a, a motion?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to House 133.3, I'd like to limit debate to two hours. Time to be allotted at the discretion of the Speaker.
Okay, we got a motion to delete, or to limit debate to, for two hours. Beginning at discretion of the Speaker, I hear a motion to move. You had, you made the motion, who I hear second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Yes.
You want to talk more than two hour, or you want to do it an hour? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Should be, 23, yes. Okay, it passed. Okay, raise, raise your, raise your right hand. It passed. Okay. That puts House Bill 1 EX, LC 472575, on the supplemental calendar for today. Debate has been limited to two hours at the discretion of the Speaker. It will be divided. Meetings adjourned, see you on the House floor.